Recording in progress.
There is my cue.
Shoot.
Oh, well, I hear something. All right, yes.
Perfect.
It's it's like crystal clear. All right. I had.
Airport.
Yeah, all right. A call to order the town of Mount Desert Planning Board meeting for August thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Welcome aboard. So here we are tonight on a gorgeous Wednesday night. And I'd like to thank everybody for their patience as I've been absent for last two months and it's great to be back. So here we are. So let's let's make some introductions. If I screw anything up tonight, Tracy, our vice chairman can get it back on course, but I'll start with that. And Tracy Loftus Keller, Vice Chair, we've got Ann Dalton, Daniel Burke, Gail Marshall, and Alan Kimerly, and got a full board tonight. And let's keep going. Tonight, first thing on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We've got minutes to approve from the twenty third of July.
We also have the ninth.
And the ninth. Thank you.
I'm of approval of both.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Right, there we go. Roll right along. And item three on the agenda tonight. All right, we've got a sub subdivision approval application. Tonight, we have a completeness review on that subdivision oh oh one twenty twenty five. Owner is Mark Dunbar. Location is fifty one Oak Hill Road, Mount Desert, tax map ten lot one thirty one. Zoning district is Shoreland or residential two and Shoreland residential two. And the purpose is to construct a third residential dwelling unit on a single tract or parcel land within a five year period, thereby creating a subdivision by development. And Kim, this one did not have to be advertised.
Did not.
And abutters did not have to be.
Yes.
They were notified.
Butters were notified by letter dated July sixteenth, two thousand twenty five, and there are a lot of butters. I would estimate about forty five butters.
Yeah. All right, and then we, this is completeness tonight, so we're just running through the checklist to find if the application is complete. It's a healthy checklist. We've already had sketch plan review on this one, and sketch plan review was like back in June, Aprils. So was present for that. Be participating in in the completeness review and we should probably clarify who the voting members are tonight. It's Alan.
I my house has been built by Mark Dunbar, and I know him. I can either stay up here or I can recuse myself. It's up to everybody else. I really don't care either way.
When was your house built by Mr.?
Thousand. He he has no comment.
Yeah.
Two thousand, two thousand four.
All right, so it's Alan.
And it's still standing.
Right, glad we got.
But I I didn't want to mention that for the record.
All right, thank you. So it's gonna be Alan, Gail, myself, Tracy, and Ann and Daniel are alternate member. So there we go. All right, so so everybody's should have the application before them. You know, this is a nice thorough application here, tracking right along with the subdivision ordinance. You know, this again, where there was the app, the agenda stated, you know, this is a sub, we're, this is a subdivision by development. So you know, we're not dividing land. We're building another residential dwelling unit on it. And if you follow along in the application and the section one, you know, we're kickoff with four two one, and we just drill down through the 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 submittals provided to us. Wow.
Do you want to start with them?
So I think that's the whole goal of tonight is the motion to find complete after.
After you go through.
After we go through it. So let's.
I mean, I assume you're voting both on it, but.
Yeah, so let's um. Okay, got your subdivision ordinance, you got the application, and we're just gonna drill through this. So bear with us. So all right, so you know, we kick it off in section four two point one, and here we go. So you know, this is where you're talking about the information, the applicant, you know, the name of the applicant, Mark and Selena Dunbar, the name of the agent, there is no agent. If the applicant is a corporation, they're not. Name of the applicant's authorized representative, there isn't one. The name, address of the surveyor, it's stated as Tom Benson in Southwest Harbor. The address to which all the correspondence that the board should send, it's, they've got that, the P O box one fifty five, Mount Desert. What interest does the applicant have in the parcel to be divided? You know, they've got a deed detached. When an interest does that have in the property abutting parcel to be subdivided? We're not looking at land division here, so there's no other property ownership. And state whether the preliminary plot plan covers the entire contiguous holdings of owner, and yes, it does. There's a survey submitted here from Tom Benson. And then moving on to four two two, the information on the parcel to be subdivided, again, we're not. This is not a land division, but it's, they give the location of the property, it's map ten lot one thirty one. Survey maps of the tract to be subdivided, there's Tom Benson's survey submitted. Current zoning of the property, again, that's residential two and Shoreland residential two. The acreage of the parcel, again, we're not dividing it, so it's nine point three acres. In S S W D. Subsurface wastewater disposal by a licensed soil engineer identifying the soil types and we've got one attached and if you get what tab that is, but it's that's in here. That's a pretty important document for constructing.
Number four.
There you go, tab four. Names of the property owners within a thousand feet, those were the forty five.
Or so.
Or so butters. There's no restrictions.
Tash and tab five.
Thank you, and there's not any restrictive covenants. The post soil erosion and sedimentation control, applicant says N A. The water supply, they say that their applicant says they're the private well. Okey dokey, and then motoring on to four two point three. The proposed name of the subdivision is area fifty one, love it. Number of lots, there again, we're not dividing the property, it's one lot with three dwelling units on it. The survey, you know, should have the date, north point, graphic map scale, that's all on their survey under tab three.
Yes, this is the index.
Say so.
Yes, three.
Those lot lines are the approximate dimensions. That's also located on the survey. Location of temporary markers to enable the board to locate the lots that's on the survey when the where the other structure to be constructed is located. Location of all parcels to be dedicated to public use, that's N A in this case, location map. It's a, you know, typically it's a USGS topographical map. And we've, that's all on the survey, there's topography shown on the survey and how it continues on to the abutting lots, so that's tab three, location and size of the existing buildings, that's on the survey. Location of wetlands, regardless of size of water bodies within the state shoreline zone, so I don't even think there are any on the.
Maybe a little bit.
No, there are, there's a, yeah, a small spit of forested wetland down in the corner there indicated. Though, then item ten, location drains which provide adequate stormwater management. They're not connecting to the storm sewer, and I don't even think it even runs up there. Location and size of existing proposed sewers and water mains, it's on the survey. Location names with the existing proposed streets. It's really only about the Oak Hill Road, that's on there. Name of the butters, we've, it's shown on the survey, direct to butters. And then subdivision, the subdivider will determine based on the FEMA's flood flood boundary and floodway maps. If it's in a flood prone area, and we've got a FEMA map.
Six.
Have six. And they are definitely not in a flood hazard area. And if there is any other information not indicated above that the board requires does the board require any additional information? So how do you guys feel about having a motion on those first three sections, or should we just wait until the end?
Wait till the end.
Yes.
You've done it both ways.
Yeah, I mean.
Doesn't matter to me.
I'll I'll make a motion if you want.
You'd be best to do the sections.
Yeah.
I move we find that the application is complete with respect to four point two point one, four point two point two, and four point two point three.
Second that.
Right, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right, then we drill down through section five. Right, it's like story time, so. There we go again. Right, so then in section five of the subdivision ordinance, we get into just like general requirements for the project. And first one under five is the buffer strip under five point one. And so what that talks about is that there's buffering elements or screening in the form of architecture or landscape design required to preserve the character and stability of allowed uses in adjoining areas and enhance the visual and aesthetic image of the district and minimize negative impacts between uses. So screening can be trees or shrubs. So buffers shall be considered in or for the following areas, long property lines, long interior roads, outside storage, and block prevailing wind patterns. And we have any buffering proposed.
You have an aerial photo. He hasn't done anything to the property that isn't already been done.
Yeah.
He's not doing any clearing.
I mean.
Put up a berm up along the Dan River area.
Right. And it's, again, we're talking about nine point three acres here, and there's only few structures on property now, so.
We've working within cleared areas that are clear.
Right, that's the key statement. He's working within cleared areas already. And they've got an attached aerial photo with that. So then everybody's okay with that, then moving on to five two, conformance with other laws and regulations. That just talks about that the proposed subdivision is in conformance with the local, state, and federal ordinances. And applicant says that the proposed subdivision does not require separate approval of state board and D E P because of the reference statute. Again, this is a, is not a land division. Five three, construction prohibited, you know, you can't start doing stuff without approval. And the application applicant says that no excavation or construct or construction will commence until a final plot plan has been approved. Five four, ditches and catch basins. The board may require installation of ditches, catch, catch basins and piping systems. Essentially putting culverts in, and the applicant says they'll comply with the requirements recommended by the planning board. And does anybody think we should be recommending any culverts, ditches, catch basins?
We've seen that site on a site visit, and none of that seemed apparent to me.
I don't think it's apparent at all. I mean, it's it's such a, I mean, it's a sizable lot, it's a flat area where they're building. You know, they're building right on grade. I don't see any need to require any additional water management.
They're a long way from a setback.
They are. Five five, everybody okay with that, I guess?
Yep.
All right. Five five easements, there are no easements here. Five six, dedication for year round housing. Says, I don't know if that's them or but it's.
That's us.
That's us.
Okay.
That's us. Yeah, and then five seven, it just gets into lots and density. I mean, they've you know, they they need all of this, and because there's no land vision here, so. Five seven two, where individual onsite sewage disposal systems are utilized, they you know, they've, they gotta submit something that it complies, and so they've got the, they talk about that the sewage disposal system shall conform to the statute as outlined, and they've got the septic plan submitted. Five seven three. Plan board shall determine if the division land will be reviewed as a cluster workforce or conventional subdivision. It's, it's none of those. It's, you know, the applicant says it's just the author doing is adding a one residential dwelling unit on a contiguous nine point three acres. By the sewage disposal. They're not located near the sanitary sewer line within fifteen hundred feet, so that's N A. By the two, where they will have a private subsurface sewage disposal system. And again, they will comply with the state domain plumbing code loser requirements and as outlined in five point eight point two point one, five point eight point two point two, and five point eight point two point three. And again, we have a septic designs submitted, land not suitable for development. Yeah, they're not in the flood plain, that's N A. Five ten, oh.
It was five.
Five, five nine, land not suitable for development. Is N A. Five ten, open space provisions, I mean, you've got nine point three acres of open space there. And what that talks about is like, you know, that board could require a proposed landscape plan showing preservation of existing trees, you know, it's pretty much cleared lot. The board may require the subdivider to reserve area of land. As open space, there's quite a bit of open space there with the nine point three acres and only two structures. And then it goes on to say that the property owners may enter into a written agreement with the selectmen for the maintenance of the land and and into the obligation to provide for the cost of development and or maintenance of the reserved open space. I mean, I think you've already been maintaining your open space there, so. Has five ten point two is N A. And it goes on to talk about wells, five eleven. Can't have a dug well. Five eleven two, they may be required to show the availability of adequate potable water, test well may be required. Applicant says N A because you're, you already have a water source there drilled well. Five twelve, performance bond, you know, this is where the board can require the applicant, you know, to provide a performance bond. I don't know how you guys feel, but I'm not feeling any need here to require a performance bond.
No, that would be most in case where you're developing and using town services and make sure that the town services weren't left in the large.
Yeah, we're just not in this case.
Not in that situation.
Hearing that we're gonna waive the requirement of a performance bond. Five thirteen talks about planned revisions after approval. Yeah, you can't go and change anything, you know, unless, you know, you gotta come back before the board and if something has changed, yeah, you just come back before the board, you gotta have a copies and all that good stuff, and the applicant says clearly, we will not make any revisions to the final plot plan without planning board approval. So, thank you. Five fourteen, street design and construction, I would say five fourteen, five fourteen point one and five fourteen point two, all relative to that is N A because there's already a current driveway and it's serving only one lot. But continuous nine point three acres, so. By fourteen point three, the yeah, the approval of the board of a subdivision plan shall not be deemed to constitute evidence or acceptance by the town of Mount Desert of any street road or right of way. There's no street road or right of way there. Access to direct sunlight, you got plenty of it. That's five fifteen. Five sixteen, cluster and workforce subdivision, I mean, that's all N A. This is not a land division. So that rounds out section five of the sub subdivision ordinance completeness items.
My move, we find that the application is completely respect to section five requirements.
Second that.
All those in favor?
Hi.
I want to mention that Mark's driveway is gonna have to be main.
Yep.
Because he's gonna have by the assessor, so there'll be a sign up. I think up and off to the right, isn't that what you said? Assessors. Because there's three buildings on one lot, so fire department needs to know like the numbers, so it's gonna be two. Eddie's way.
Yeah, Eddie.
Northwest. Anyway, two anyway, so it'd be two would be the shop with the apartment, three would be the current building to the right, and then they will be three Eddie way, lane, street, way. But you'll see there will be sign names because the assessor is making them name it.
Right. Then we go through six A, B, and C.
Enjoy.
Yeah. All right, I told you to bear with us. Storytime continues. All right, so now we go on to, now we jump over to completeness relative to section six A, B, and C of the land use ordinance. So, and this looks like a whole new
setup.
Whole new setup here.
Right.
It is, it's.
One word, two words.
Mm hmm, so. All right, so I'm, you know, you can flip over to second, you guys know the drill on that's section six A. The land use ordinance. Standard stuff. And what section six A looks at, it's it's general performance standards, and then we have subsections of section six A, and my favorite one is section six A one, compatibility, and so under compatibility, the applicant talks about that it's a residential use and development within a residential neighborhood. They're adding one more residential structure. Six A two, erosion and sedimentation control, the applicant says N A. And just for the record, we should probably ask the applicant what they say N A about erosion and sedimentation control.
He's not doing any soil disturbance. When he applies for a permit, he'll have to have erosion and sedimentation.
Okay, that's handled under the construction permit. All right, six A three, highway safety, we're not increasing any additional burden there with a single residence. Since applicant says N A, impact on town services, there are no town services there in terms of water sewer land suitability. Applicant says six under six A five. N A.
I think we should say C.
Yeah, I think it's absolutely suitable, and
Yeah, should the application just say C application?
I would suggest that. I think your land is definitely suitable.
And it has to be, so.
Do do we have the original?
It's right here.
Yeah.
Getting back home.
So like the septic designs.
Yeah.
That it was.
And it's
Okay, here's the other part.
I mean, it's a.
Here it is. Do you want to come up?
I want to have your idea.
Just. Yeah, just say C application and initial it on the original application.
A five.
Suitable C. C M K is all you need to do. If you would just your initials next to where you strike through. In the margin.
If they six, is there any lot outdoor lighting on the?
They submit for a permit, then they'll have it.
Okay. Let's handle with the construction permit. Let's handle with the construction permit. With this, so that's N A. Same thing with stormwater, N A. Uh, six A eight, there is no vegetation there, it's pretty much open where the proposed structure is going. So that's N A, six A nine dust fumes, vapors, odors and gases also. N A. Uh, then we. Why don't we get a vote on?
I move we find that the application as regard to section six A is oops.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Then we move on to section B or section six B. Specific performance standards for activities and land uses and. Almost all of. Almost all of these are N A, so. Six B one agriculture, N A, six B two reserved, N A. Six B three beach construction, that's a new one. N A, uh, six B four boat storage, N A, six B five campgrounds, N A. Six B six driveway construction, so. Here the applicant talks about that, uh. A driveway into the property already exists and they're just gonna extend it and will meet the requirements of section six B six. Uh, six B seven excavation or filling, N A. Six B eight fences and walls, N A, they're not building any. Six B nine, there's no private campsites, N A. Six B ten home occupations or home offices, N A. Six B eleven lots. And here the applicant talks about that the current lot area meets the dimensional requirements within the, um. Zoning district and it allows for the, uh, third residential dwelling on the lot. Um, six B twelve manufactured homes, N A, six B thirteen. Thankfully, they're not building a quarry, um. Six B fourteen mobile homes, campers, trailers and recreational vehicles is N A. Six B fifteen talks about sanitary standards. And here the applicant talks about the third residential dwelling unit will be, um, it's, it's on a septic system and then. We have a septic system designed for it. And it is attached, six B sixteen, there's no sign regulations. N A, six B seventeen. Um, it's not gonna be any unregistered vehicles. Six B eighteen, they're not building a cell tower, so it's N A. Six B nineteen animal husbandry two, the village commercial and shoreline commercial districts, they're not in either of those districts. And a six B twenty, they're not. Gonna have a food truck, six B twenty one, they're not building a rooming house. Six Bs twenty two, they're not building a hotel. Or motel.
I move that we respect the provisions of six B, they are all not applicable except for sixty six driveway construction, six B eleven lots, six B fourteen, six B fifteen. For which the standards have been met or for which the application is complete.
Look at that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So you guys are in the shoreline zone.
Corner of the lot, yeah.
Is that to Somes Pond or what, what kicks them into the shore?
I know someone it. It's, yeah, it's the.
What?
You don't know what it is?
I can't, I don't.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a big wetland behind like my way that goes to the summer.
So it's because the acreage.
I know and there's that way, you can see it off Main Row, Main Street.
All right, so that's why we're in the shoreline zone.
Yeah, sadly, but yes.
So then we wade through the section six C shoreline zoning standards, so. Sixty one agriculture and animal husbandry is N A, sixty two archaeological sites. So the applicant says that the property is not located within the designated archaeological site and they've got the map submitted under tab. Yeah, tab eight. Six C three clearing, N A, it's an open lot. Sixty four commercial and industrial uses, so residence. Sixty five essential services. Sixty six parking areas, N A. Sixty seven marine and freshwater structure performance standards, you're not building a pier. Six C eight principal and accessory structures. And so they refer us to the survey map for the existing principal and accessory structures. Uh, already located on the property. Uh, sixty nine roads and driveways. There, there's no driveway proposed in the shoreline. Residential two zone. Sixty ten septic waste disposal. The septic system isn't in the shoreline zone here. And sixty eleven water quality, applicant says. N A.
I move that the application is complete with respect to the provisions of six C.
Open top.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Here we go.
Getting it.
We are getting there. There. We're three pages away. Uh, what, main revised statute? So this is. We just added this.
For subdivision, we have to.
Yeah, when you started.
Okay.
It's redundant, but yes, we have to do this.
This is. All right, so it's the main revised statutes title thirty eight and forty four oh four. So that talks about review criteria when adopting subdivision regulations and. And so there's all the subsections here and, um, first one is pollution. And, uh, talks about the proposed subdivision will not result in undue water or air pollution. And applicant says that the proposed subdivision will not result in undue water or air pollution. Two, uh, sufficient water. Uh, talks about. The, um, statute talks about that the proposed subdivision has sufficient water available. And the applicant says that this proposed subdivision complies with that requirement. You guys already have wells and water on the site. Uh, three municipal water supply, it's not served by municipal water. Four erosion, we talked about that earlier, that'll be indicated on the, um. Erosion control measures will be indicated on the construction permit application, so applicant says N A. Here, uh. Five traffic that the proposed subdivision will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion. You guys are adding one. Single family residents. Six. Sewage disposal, again, we've got a septic system designed and submitted with the application. Seven municipal solid waste disposal. Uh, the applicant says that the municipal services are not gonna be utilized, so that sounds like you're gonna have a private trash service. And eight. There you go. Eight aesthetic, cultural and natural values. The proposed subdivision will not have an undue adverse effect on scenic or natural beauty of the area aesthetics, historic sites. Significant wildlife habitat and as identified the Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife. So the applicant talks about the proposed development will not have an undue adverse effect on scenic or natural beauty of the area. It's a big open lot and they're set way, way back.
From gravel pit.
It is a formal.
It's an upgrade.
Yes, there are no historic sites, significant wildlife habitats. And that has been identified by the Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife and they've got a habitat map submitted under.
Nine.
Tab nine. And then item nine, conforming with local ordinances and plans. The applicant says the proposed subdivision complies with this requirement. And financial and technical capacity. And the applicant says that the subdivider has the financial and technical capacity comply with this requirement. Eleven surface waters outstanding rivers segments. I don't think there is, do we have any rivers in the town, a mountain, so, um, so that's N A. Streams.
Rivers.
No rivers. Well, groundwater. Uh, talks that the proposed subdivision will not alone or in conjunction with existing activities adverse adversely affect the groundwater. And applicant says that they. Both subdivision complies with that requirement. Thirteen flood areas, they're not in a flood prone area and we have an attached FEMA map under tab. Six. Uh, freshwater wetlands, all freshwater wetlands, um. Have been identified on the maps and. Uh, again, that's shown on the survey on tab.
Uh, sorry.
Three.
Yeah, that'll be the survey three.
Um, then. Okay, bear with me. Fourteen A farmland is in a. Fifteen river streamer brook. There's no river streamer brook within the budding proposed subdivision. Res. And where tab, let's all refer to the survey. Yeah, where is the river streamer brook?
It looks like it's on New York. Yes, it's on the adjacent.
Right, so. Uh, fifteen is N A, sixteen stormwater, um. That they need to provide for adequate stormwater management and the applicant says that they'll comply with this requirement, that'll be. Demonstrated on the construction permit. Seventeen is spaghetti lots prohibited, there's no land division, so that's N A. Eighteen lake phosphorus concentration. They don't abut a lake and. N A. Uh, nineteen impact on adjoining municipality. Doesn't cross municipal boundaries, N A. Twenty land subject to liquidation or missing. That is all N A.
I remember that the application is complete with respect to the main revised statute title thirty eight, second four four oh four.
Second time.
May all those in favor? Aye. And then, um. I think we did it other than maybe a motion to find. We don't, we don't have public comment at this point, do we?
Oh, this is a public hearing.
Yeah, it's, the public hearing is coming up.
Next, next meeting.
Next meeting, thank you. So why don't we just get an overall motion for the. Completeness of the entirety of the application.
I move that the application. Is.
And it's tardy.
I think that.
Any further discussion? None heard, all those in favor? Congratulations on being completed.
So we need to.
So.
We're supposed to do this.
So we need to do this.
Um, while you're doing that, can I just say personally speaking, this is a lot to ask somebody to go through for a project like this. And when we, when. Ordinances are written. They can't anticipate everything. It's not our ordinance, we don't, we just have to see that it's enforced, it's the town's ordinance, the town actually votes the town meetings and. But these ordinances should be subject to regular review and we actually are in fact spending a lot of time right now reviewing. A subdivision ordinance and whether or not a subdivision ordinance should, what a new one should look like to be. Protective, but also user friendly and. Kim can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding of the one that we've been plowing through. Actually breaks out certain types of subdivision applications, so and. Uh, my guess is that this kind of application might well be something that in the future. Should the town choose to change its subdivision ordinance and that happens at town meeting at some point. That we wouldn't, you wouldn't need to go through the planning board for this sort of thing that it could go through. The. The code enforcement officer.
So your project might go in the tax box.
Yes, so that's my, is that, is that sound right to you, Ken? That we, yeah, that that's one thing.
You have minor, uh, minor and major.
Minor and major and then land division and versus buildings and.
We, we don't need more work, but. I mean, if it's gonna streamline and help people so they don't, you know, I'm sure.
You've probably pretty intensively gone through this. You've probably pretty intensively gone through this anyway with the applicant, so. I. There is hope. And maybe you can come and provide testimony. Just put that at some point.
Date pending, I don't.
Don't, don't worry about that.
And don't do it, I just suck. I did, where do I date it?
Is that right on the side?
There's a date.
Date approved?
No.
I have date pending, public hearing date and date approved. How about I just?
Sign your name.
All right.
Yes, I didn't create that form.
No. Eight thirteen.
Right, thank you.
That, you create that one?
No, no. Clearly.
No.
Right.
There we go.
All right. There.
So you, so your completeness is official. So next, next we have the public hearing and the final compliance and. And.
That, when does that, when will that happen? The, the hearing for the.
Public hearing?
Yeah.
It's gonna be September tenth.
Okay.
That's a step because I have to put two notices in the newspaper and it has to go in fourteen days, so we don't meet the next meeting, August twenty seven. There you go.
And there's a public hearing associated with that.
And you can have somebody represent you.
And we.
You can, if you want to.
We'll be, you know.
Because you're gonna be going, or you can wait, go the end of September, it's up to you.
Hopefully, get instructions done.
Well, I get that, that's why I was just saying, you're just gonna have to write a letter sent to the town saying who's the representative.
You want it.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
He doesn't know yet.
All right, so, um, moving on, item four, any other? Other?
Except that we have been working hard this summer in your, sometimes in your absence, reviewing the subdivision.
And you missed it all. I did miss.
Just trust us, it's good.
All right.
We're at the point actually where we should be, I, when we last met, asked Matt if he could provide us with. We've, we've done all the pieces, broken into pieces and we've asked him, can you just, when you get this done and make little changes we're talking about, can you give us the whole thing? So that we can then see the whole.
Great.
We're also gonna find others, other towns, what's in heat ordinances that we.
Yeah, yeah.
Motion for adjourned. Let's entertain that, sure. All right, any further discussion?
Not debate.
All those in favor? Seth, I gotta ask you. Seth, I gotta ask you a really important question, as soon as the recording.